Said I just to before the open the meeting, I do not see our animal control officer, do we?
No.
Not here yet.
He's the gentleman just walked in.
Oh, sorry, okay, sorry, I didn't.
I'm expecting Jen.
Nope, I'm the assistant animal control officer.
And you're all set?
Yep, I'm ready to go when you are.
Okay, we're ready to go then, okay, uh, let's take this opportunity to open the meeting at five P M. Public hearing, a dangerous dog hearing in accordance with the provisions of master general law, sec. Chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven in the Barry bylaws, chapter eleven, section thirteen. A public hearing will be held this evening and we are about to commence that hearing at five P M. It's determined in our notification to determine if a dog at the address of one forty Valley Road, Barry, Mass. Is a potentially dangerous dog. Um, I'm gonna, I guess, go to the animal control officer if you can give us some specifics on the case. I believe there are individuals here who perhaps have something they'd like to add. But if you could start, that would be nice, if you could enter your name into the record for us, please.
Ma'am Chair, I'm actually gonna default to the dog owner and to the, um, the other party as well to go first and then I will follow up with recommendations.
Okay, uh, so anyone who will speak, if you could give me your name and address for the record, please. And if you are the owner of the dog or seemingly the ones rising the complaint of relative to the dog's behavior. Okay, I think both sides have very important things to offer.
So you have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah, so we'll open the meeting, please, with a move of the vote.
Ma'am Chair, I make a motion, we open the, uh, dog, dangerous dog hearing scheduled for tonight at five o'clock.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to open the public hearing as advertised and as, um, related to the board. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving forward, um, I'll go to you and ask you to identify the people that you'll be bringing as forward as witnesses, please. It's you.
Right.
No, no, the, the officer, the control officer.
That's him.
That's him.
That's you, yeah, but the gentleman behind you is thinking it's him, I just wanted to make sure.
That's correct.
He was going me and you were going me and I was sorry.
So, I, I don't know who's here this evening, so I apologize, I don't know if the dog owner is here or the, the, um, the person who brought the complainant.
Do we, as a complainant here?
Typically, the way we do this is the dog owner usually comes forward, the complainant comes forward, and then I usually come up as the third party and then give my recommendations.
Okay, could I have the individuals raising the complaint, please? Just please stand, uh, just your record, name for the record, we can start.
Marie Petrice.
Spell it, please.
M A R I E. Petrice is P E T R I D as in David, E S.
Okay, and your residence, location?
One thirty-one Valley Road.
And the individual with you?
Victoria, B I C T O R I A. Petrice, P E T R I D as in David, E S.
Thank you, same residence?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I guess we would ask you to just explain your situation and the complaint that you have.
My mother, Marie, and my sister and relative of they have were on a walk with our three other dogs that they typically did throughout the evening and their dog of.
Your dogs were licensed, I mean leased?
Yes, all dogs were leased, the two smaller ones, Bella and Daisy, they were on ponies and Snowball was on a collared leash. And that's when they were walking, they across the street and that's when a dog from one forty Valley Road keep running out and attacking our dog Bella.
Attacked it in?
She, the dog Bella died, we had brought her to the veg and shoes bearing, we have paperwork from them. And upon arrival to the veterinary hospital, she had already stopped breathing.
Did you, did you get any paperwork from the vet, vet's office that, that we could have if necessary?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you so much, um, we have the dog owners here?
Yes.
So you're the, uh, gentleman that had the dogs that went across the street and, and they were walking up, okay. So why don't you identify yourself, please?
My name is Thomas McConkey, T H O M A S M C C O N K E Y.
Thank you, Tom.
I'd like to start off with this has never been an incident that I've ever had to deal with before with any dogs that I've had. And I wanna say that this is a very, very tragic accident, no mistake, more serious than I can even express. However, I don't believe my dog is a very dangerous dog. I do believe that is, in hindsight, my responsibilities, that it was my negligence and not in the eyes of my dog. That this incident happened.
And would you explain the incident, the dog came across the street, he wasn't like leashed or anything?
No, ma'am, um, we have what's called the electronic leashes, um, and we've had him for three years now in the same yard with no issues. We've had dogs from other yards come in and he's sniffed and smelled and had no issues with them. I was sitting with my kids in the backyard with both dogs, um, they sniffed off to the, the neighbor's yard like they usually do. And I saw one just start running to the front and I immediately ran after them, hitting the buttons as much as I could. And by the time I got to the front, there was nothing I could do.
Is that potentially what happened from your perspective, as you were walking the dogs, the other dog just came across the street or across the yard?
Well, he came up from his yard, the dog, but we were screaming, me and another neighbor were screaming, help, help, help. So it took a while for the gentleman to come in between the houses to grab his dog, but by then my dog was.
Injured?
Really bad, yeah.
Now, had you ever had a problem, have you taken that walk before, had you ever had a problem with the dogs barking? You've never had concerns about this dog?
I didn't even know they had dogs at the time.
Okay. Uh, the control officer, if you could give us your rendition?
Would you like me to approach, ma'am Chair?
I would, please. Identify yourself for the record.
Sure, I'm the assistant animal control officer, my name's Matt DiSara, for the regional, uh, animal control that you guys have.
Now, now that you're back as to the audience, speak up.
Sure.
So that they can hear you.
Good thing I'm Italian.
If you say so, sir.
Yes, I do have a packet here for the board members, uh, it's the, um, state rulings, I don't care what the H for on you. It's the state rulings on what is considered a dangerous or nuisance dog.
Thank you. You can share.
Chapter one forty. Yep, no problem, so that way you guys can have the, uh, official state ruling on what a dangerous or nuisance dog is. So, um, this incident occurred on August twenty-second of this year, um, I was called to the residence of one forty Valley Road. Both myself and Barry P D responded to the call, I came into our dispatch center and I was dispatched out along with Barry P D. By the time we got there, both parties were not in the roadway, um, nobody was actually on scene at the time. Apologies, I'm just gonna let, um. I apologize, I'm gonna butcher your last name, I'm so sorry, how do you pronounce your last name?
It's Petrice.
Thank you, so Ms. Petrice, uh, was not on scene, she was bringing her dog to the animal hospital, so I did not get to speak with them the day of the incident. Um, I actually spoke with her the next day via telephone, um, I did speak with the, um, dog's owner, um, Thomas. So I did speak with Thomas, uh, at the time of the incident, we had a conversation in his yard. We actually took the dog into our possession and held him at the kennel for the, um, state's ten-day quarantine that's required when a dog bite occurs. Um, so his dog Morty actually came to our facility for the ten-day quarantine and did not stay at the house. Sometimes in a non-violent situation, dog bite, we will sometimes leave the dog at the house. Um, so therefore it doesn't disrupt the dog's pattern and kinda makes it a little easier. Makes it more comfortable for the dog during a dog bite situation if it's a one-time-off thing. This is the first time we've ever been called to this location, we have not had any history prior to this incident or after this incident. So this is the first time that this has happened, um, at this location. Well, uh, Thomas's dog was at the kennel, um, he did not display signs of aggression towards me, um, or other, or Jen, our A C O as well. We were actually able to take him out on walks and he was, um, a normal dog when he was around us. So he was not aggressive towards humans while we had him at the kennel, we did treat him like a normal dog, we would take him on on walks, so therefore he wasn't in the kennel twenty-four seven. We did, um, feed him regularly and change out his water and clean his cage, so we did interact with the dog while he was at the kennel. And he did not show aggression towards us at the time. Ma'am Chair, through you, if it's okay, um, I'd like to ask the, um, Ms. Petrice, um, what kind of leash they had on the dog?
Sure.
If, um, I was just curious, the dog, when you're walking your dog, what kind of leash did you have on, is it one of those retractable kind or was it just?
Okay.
Cause I did not ask that question, so I apologize. So, um, so I'm assuming it was a three or five-foot leash, is that correct?
Yeah.
So it was well within close to him, the reason why I ask that question is if they were twenty feet, if the dog was twenty feet away, it kinda changes the scope a little bit here.
I got you.
Um, but because it was so close, um, it means the dog had to come right up to them and interact with them. So, that's why I wanted to ask that question. Yes, his dog was off-leash and I came onto the front yard and I came, um, after the dog. Our recommendation would be that either a fence or a, um, kennel setup be put up, kennel, some kind of kenneling system. Uh, fencing be put up in his property to keep the dog contained when it's outside, so therefore this dog do not enter to the front property. And everything would be behind his property, so it can't enter to the front of the house. Again, the dog has not, didn't have an incident prior to this and has not had an, uh, incident after this.
Okay, um, would you like to comment on that? The potential solution, which is to ensure that there's a fence and kennel system, this is that is behind his home and that the dog is confined to that area?
May I actually come up and give you a witness statement?
I think I've read it before, but you may entered into the record. Is, this is what you sent to us before?
Um, I'm not really sure if I did exactly, but I'm sorry, I should've made copies for everybody.
Thank you, I'll just take a quick look.
That is the people that live directly across the street from them, so.
Well, this is certainly similar to what has been described by the owner and the, and the dog and emergency detective came running down the street and wrapped the small dog in a blanket. Took her to the emergency vet, um, when met with the owner, he wanted that the dog was unfriendly. Okay, I met with the owner, that's you?
No.
No, Rebecca? Okay, so when she met with the, the, um, the owner, she says that the owner wanted that their dog was unfriendly, there was no leash on the large dog in the yard, it's not fenced to his, to her, to her knowledge. That's different than what you've described.
Yeah.
Would you describe it, uh, would you indicate that that's a correct thing, that the dog is generally unfriendly and?
I haven't had seen the dogs until that day, but from everything that I've seen, even the aftermath, it doesn't come off as friendly.
He doesn't come off the front yard, okay.
That's from our neighbor, actually, not this Victoria, but she lives at one thirty-nine.
Okay.
She wrote that.
Okay. You weren't holding the dog, were you?
No.
No, okay, no, I meant for her holding the little dog, okay. Okay, we have a recommendation from the, um, those, anybody, are there questions for the animal control officer representative?
Um, are all the dogs, uh, properly licensed and vaccinated?
Yes. Mine, I guess.
They're born.
Yep, okay. Mark, questions?
No, I don't really need a question, um, well, I mean, does, is it, so is the, does the dog typically get loose?
No, and we've already proactively started putting up fences between both houses and we have both, uh, thirty-foot leads from big oak trees in the backyard as well.
How old is the dog?
Nine years.
So it's not youthful, exuberance, okay.
We have operated some medicine for him as well, cause he's had troubles getting up in that stage.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, you heard the recommendation of the, um, control officer, are you amenable to?
Let me ask you that first.
To, uh, taking those, uh, steps? Within what ti- time, timeframe would you recommend immediately?
Um, we are getting into winter and the ground's gonna start to freeze soon, so trying to put holes in the ground might be a little challenging. But however, we still have some time, we are at the beginning of November, uh, November right now. I would think a sixty-day window.
That's more than generous, in my opinion.
Right, but because of the, I'm thinking, I would like to see it in before December, but I know that, you know, time, stuck ground's gonna start to freeze soon, so. I'm trying to be able, I'm not trying to go over generous, but I'm also trying to give them a little bit of time in case they have to find somebody to install the fence and get towards.
My concern is that the dog remains, um, you know, with the electronic fence, but does not have a.
He has a, we, like I said, we have two thirty-foot leads that are on big oak trees in the backyard that they sit on and out before they go, when they go outside.
So they have, they have?
They have, they have, uh, harnesses and.
Oh, okay, so when they're outside, they're, you know, okay.
They're restrained.
They're restrained, okay. Well, let me ask the neighbors who had the, um, violation of their, of their property of their little pup. Is that an amenable, uh, agreement at this point in time, it seems fair to, fair that the dog is going to be totally restrained? And should that not happen, uh, obviously you would have the right to complain immediately and we would take further action.
I guess I'm kinda like really upset because I've lost my dog cause of this, you know, I had her for ten years. Now it's a void in my house, so.
It also just, I don't know, I mean, this happened back in August and the fact that there's still not a fence put up a few months later is a little concerning. I mean, my seventeen-year-old sister had to see stuff outside of the dog that she should not have seen, I'm twenty and I was there after, seeing the aftermath. I did not see things that I wish that anybody could see. Like she was a small dog, she wasn't big, her stomach was gone. I mean.
I mean, our, our obligation obviously is to hear both sides and to try to make the best and most just reasonable decision we can. Um, I certainly understand your situation and feel that it had to be a traumatic experience, not only for you and your mom, but other neighbors hearing about it, okay? I appreciate your, you know, as the owner of the, of the dog, that you take responsibility, but it does seem odd that the fence isn't up yet.
It is up.
It is up?
Yes.
Who supervises this fence, like, uh, so that we know that's proper?
So we could, um, we could go and inspect the property and make sure that the fence is there and in place. We could also, if you would like, ma'am Chair, we could actually amend that to a thirty-day, um, instead of sixty, we can push it back to thirty if it would be from today forward.
I think if I wanted to control my dog, I could get a fence up in thirty days.
Yep.
Um, are you, uh, are you able to even see the dog when you walk by it, is it pretty much now controlled?
Well, how their yard is, it, like, they have like a garden fence up on both sides of their house. I wish I took a picture of it and I thought I did, but I can't find it.
Ma'am Chair, I would, we're chicken wire. I would put that back to a chain-linked fence.
A chain-linked fence?
Yep, chain-linked fence would have to be the, the fence, fence put up.
What's the breed of the dog?
It is a pit bull.
Pit bull.
Yep.
I mean, the master general law is pretty specific here, it has to be two feet down on the ground, like, there's, there's parameters.
Correct.
And that's why I asked, who's gonna inspect us and make sure this is a proper?
Yep, we would, we would do the enforcement.
If we, if we so choose to do this, I mean, we need to make sure it's a proper installation.
That can be part of your, that can be part of your ruling tonight, that we would go and inspect the fence and if it's not up to the standards and the, as prescribed.
And the thirty days seems reasonable to, to me.
How tall is the fence that's here now?
Four, about four feet.
Four feet?
Four feet.
I saw it was a pit bull, um, I don't, I mean, if it's just the fence, I don't think four feet's a challenge for the dog. You know what I mean?
But that is, is that your recommendation as the animal control officer, that we authorize the, um, dog to remain in good health and in this area? With the, uh, installation of a four-foot chain-linked fence and that?
At minimum, a chain-linked fence.
And he be chained when he out, outdoors in the area where you've already have a chain set up?
Yeah, I mean, the, the fence should restrain him to that area anyway.
Yeah, right, yes.
So, um, to put him on a tether inside there would be double kind of that. Um, if that's what the board wishes, then, then that can be your, your pervy, um, but the chain-linked fence should keep him within that confined area and he should not be getting out. Um, obviously, if a gate becomes unlocked, then there's the potential he could get out, so if you wish to double tether him within there, you can do that. I mean, if he has a thirty-foot tether right now and he stays within a fenced-in area, then I would say that's enough for the dog to move around and also stop the, the ability to get out of that fence. Should it be left open or something to that nature.
So you hear the constraints that the board would potentially, if we follow this recommendation, put on you and the dog?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, you hear that, um, re- recommendation as the people who have been, you know, the victims of the, uh, dog attack? Are you feeling safe with that as we begin and if there's any, you know, anything that happens yet where this dog is loose again? Obviously, the board would, with your recommendation, I'm guessing, take very severe action. You're nodding, but could I have a, a yes, no, maybe?
It's a little hard, my sister has a small Vee Sean and she no longer feels comfortable going on walks anymore. We have a husky, we don't take them outside, we don't, we don't go for walks like the way that they used to go for walks anymore since the attack. I mean, just a second ago, he said that the fence was up, but before that, he said that he was in the process of putting it up. So I'm a little confused on if the fence is up or if it's in the process of being put, put up, cause it's two different things, there's two different answers.
Well, what we're basically thinking about is the recommendation that within the next thirty days, the specific fence is up or the dog is not gonna be there, correct?
That could be one of your stipulations, yes.
Yeah, it has to be proper and inspected and, and what have you, like, we're not just gonna allow a fence to be put up, not have it inspected by these. This, his department or is?
Is the dog outside all day?
No, we only take him out at seven o'clock, three o'clock, maybe seven o'clock.
Would it be easier for a kennel?
Yes, actually, it would be much easier for a kennel.
Is there more than one dog at your house, sir?
Yes.
Are they the same breed?
No, one's a staffed petter.
Okay.
I mean, a four-foot fence, like I said, it's not a challenge for a pit bull, I, I just think a kennel would be more appropriate for the situation, if it doesn't spend up, it's not outside all day.
No, it's not.
I'm concerned about the height.
I, I, I look to you for your recommendation.
The kennel would be okay because that's a taller, it's usually about a four or five-foot tall structure with a roof over. Yep, and that can be as many panels as it wants to be, so if it wants to.
Bigger, smaller.
Yep, if you want to make it larger or smaller.
If you wanna make chain link, it's really quick and easy to get.
Yep, and, yeah, so the, the, and he can secure the, the kennel to the ground, whether it's on a concrete pad or whether it's just into the ground with some kind of anchoring system, but that can be done as well. So if, either a kenneling, uh, either one of those, we all know kennel system.
I mean, we want you to feel safe, um, over time to, to walk your pets, um, you know, in the, in the public way safely.
Yeah.
It's just a, like I keep saying, it's just a little hard because all the dogs did, our two little dogs did was bark at our neighbor at one thirty Valley Road, like they typically do when they see people and that's what triggered. A pit bull to run from the yard and kill our dog.
Uh, would you, but I, I, I think, I don't think I heard you well, that you, something happened to the dog barking and?
Our, our neighbor from one thirty Valley Road, as she said, one thirty-nine Valley Road, as she said, written in her statement, she had came home that day when they were, my mom and my sister were on a walk. The two little dogs started barking at her and that's what triggered the dog to run from the yard of one forty Valley Road.
So, so the dogs, you were walking, barking, really stimulated this other dog to come?
Out of nowhere.
Okay, well, we, we don't know what really made him come for, out of the yard that day and, uh, you know, obviously, uh, he not only frightened you, but also, you know, unfortunately kill the dog, so. Uh, so are we thinking kennel is probably a better response to this?
It is up to the choice of the board whether you wanna fence or a kennel, a kennel would be amenable, um, we would suggest either a fence or a kennel.
Well, a kennel is, one, easier to get in place and, two, um, easier to inspect and easier, if you so choose, after fashion, not to have that dog anymore or whatever, to, to remove from your property. Are we, are we good with that, board, when, do we have a motion to proceed with some course of action here?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, um, have the dog owner install a kennel. Um, to, I guess it would be to his liking as far as size, as long as it's contained the dog, I, I mean, a kennel actually has the roof too, so I mean. Yeah, a complete four-sided kennel with a, with a roof in it.
May I suggest in your motion that we, uh, have that the, once, once it's decided that the, the person has, it's gonna be seven feet tall, it's gonna be this, it's gonna be that, that his design be approved by the? By the animal control officer?
Yes, yeah.
And inspected.
And inspected after, after it's installed, inspected to? To meet the requirements of keeping that dog contained.
Is there a minimum that the board would like to see because?
A minimum height?
A minimum for the kennel, yes.
Well, one dog, what's your recommendation, or you're gonna put both dogs in it?
I could go both dogs.
So that we may wanna?
What would be your recommendation then for having a suitable space for two dogs to go outside for a bit of time and come back?
Sixteen by sixteen?
I would say at least a ten by ten would probably be big enough, that would be the smallest, I would go for two dogs in there, uh, because they're aluminum carriers, so it's smaller, so. That would probably be a good area to give them enough space in there and, uh, let them have their space, but also not too confined where it kinda cramps them in and something could happen.
You guys going a ten by ten, would that be amenable to you?
Yeah, ten by ten's fine.
And then, and then.
Sixteen by sixteen.
Minimum, I think minimum.
It's minimum.
I think minimum.
They're not out there very long, it's just for a little bit.
Yep.
Sir, do you hear, the situation, okay? So we have, you have a, a motion that we started here, which is to, um, uh, find owner to, uh, produce a kennel.
Install a kennel.
And specifications to be approved by you, which is minimally, a ten by ten with an eight-foot height? I'm just thinking of.
They're not, they're not, they're tall.
Yeah, they come pre-manufactured.
Sixteen, sixteen.
Yeah.
Chain link?
Within a certain amount of days.
Anchor to the ground, so we can't have dig unders.
Chain link fence?
Yep, certain, certain, something so that dogs can't dig under it.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever the, so they come prefab, they, they can also, I don't know if it's chain link or welded wire, but something of that nature would be, um, amenable. Just not chicken wire, that's what I'm more trying to avoid, um, so something of that nature. And then if we want, we could say to, if you're gonna put it in effect from today, today's November third, we could say by December third, it has to be in place, uh, at the, at the latest. And that should give us enough time before the ground freezes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I mean.
And Richard, you are, you hear the specifications?
I do.
Ten by ten, six feet high, chain link, or acceptable, right?
Correct.
Okay?
And anchored.
And anchored and it would obviously be approved by you?
Mm-hmm.
And then you would resp- you know, give that information to the board, letting us know that it is now safe for, and so we could keep you in, you know, informed as to the progress, so that we make sure the dog is contained.
Is the location in the yard, um, something that's, a argument?
Right outside the door, by the basement door, I can put the kennel right outside.
What would you say, how many acres do you own there?
Point six.
Point six? Okay.
Yeah, and I didn't, listen, if the dog gets out again, then it's gonna be a different story.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just being honest.
Yes, sir.
Dead honest, like.
Yes, sir.
This can't happen again, cause we can't have a little chi- child next time, can't have another pet happen next time, so.
So I think we have a, a motion, do, do you get the specifications in there that, that we require? And that, um, the animal control officer will be, uh, required to provide us with data that says this has happened, this has been done, so that we can communicate with you to let you know? That what the board has voted and authorized happened, happened, okay? Should you have any further problems or concerns, be in this thirty-day period where the dog gets loose or something again, you really don't need to get to the animal control officer or to the board. Okay, um, so you have it, we have a motion made.
I'll second that motion.
A motion made and seconded, which is to construct a, a dog kennel on your property, uh, pop, pop, ten by ten, chain link, six foot. And that you do so within the next thirty days, which would be a December third deadline date, and that to be inspected by the animal control officer. And, um, when that happens, then, uh, we would expect that the situation is over. However, should you fail, we will be back in touch and, um, sadly, I think you love your dog.
Yes.
And I think that you wouldn't make so foolish as to believe that if you. And I think that you wouldn't be so foolish as to believe that if you leave that dog loose, that you can really protect him, because unfortunately, we will have to remove him, and I, I don't want to do that. But I don't want to have the neighborhood feeling in jeopardy because of the dog not being properly kennelled. So we have a motion made and seconded to kennel the dog as described. Do we have a vote, please? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a vote, and I'll be, I'll make that unanimous. We have a vote to authorize the neighbor to do the job, do the work, and for you to check it out, and please let us know on the early December whether that has happened. Do we have any other questions or concerns from, from the people who own the dog? Okay, who is lost? Okay. Sam, did you have something to add to this of...
Just a question as a non-dog owner, are those electronic devices not effective?
They are effective most of the time. I would say most of the time. If you have a determined dog, he or she will run through. I only say this because I have two dogs who are in electronic, or should say electric fence, and occasionally, if something really exciting is happening outside, the, and I only have Australian Shepherds, so they're sort of just going after the cows next door to make sure they're herded properly. But I, you know, I could, I wouldn't put my life on it, I'd put my life on a kennel. Because they really, they'll just run right through it if they're so inclined. Thank you very much for coming forward, and should you have a complaint or concern about this matter, you would make sure you get to our administrative assistant, give us the information so that we can continue to ensure that this happens. And sir, thank you for your, I think, honest, you know, kind of assessment of the situation and your willingness to take responsibility. Thank you for that.
Officer, this here, you'll reach out to, yeah, Melanie.
I would look for a motion to leave the public hearing for this matter.
I move to adjourn the public hearing.
Second to here.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn the public hearing on dangerous dog hearing. I would call a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, looks unanimous, and thanks again for your time. We'll be ready now to open the meeting. The general, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stan and James are on the call right now.
Stan and James?
James is with you.
Oh, yeah, we're way down here with Andrew Skye.
Stan and James are on the call right now.
Okay.
Well, we'll go right into the approval of meeting minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the October twenty, twenty-five meeting minutes as presented?
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for October twentieth, twenty-five. Any changes, omissions, anything that we need to correct?
I thought they read well.
Those in, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we now have the town administrator report.
It's a long report. What's going on?
Everything, I like it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I was telling Rich earlier that I feel like I have put out a lot of the major fires, and now I'm just digging under the regular stuff, trying to, to get it done. So you'll see the procurement list is quite a bit smaller. This week, there's only two items on there. The, we had one bidder for the sewer compact loader, and I've done up a contract for that. Mr. George is gonna take it to the sewer commission for approval of the award and the contract, and then that will be fully executed. The paving bids and the fuel bids are both active, and we're getting bid requests in for those. Those will be closed, the paving bid will close November tenth, and the fuel bid November eleventh. So it's exciting to get those done, and hopefully, we're done with procurement for a little bit. That's taken up quite a bit of time. And then as far as the grants, we have three fence, we have the three fence repair quotes in. They are all over, we have just over eight thousand dollars left in the grant funds, and they're all over that, so...
What are they, do you remember?
Eleven thousand, yeah, probably like thirteen, and the last one came in at like sixteen thousand.
Oh, so eleven is the low?
So we're, we're gonna have to look at it and decide.
We may, we may be able to augment this with some donations.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think there were some donations that if you could get, we could make up the difference potentially.
Because we, I know we need trash cans there, but, and I was going to order a trash can to the tune of five hundred dollars, but the shipping is three hundred dollars. So now you're looking at an eight hundred dollar trash can. So I haven't ordered one yet because you're a fence trash can, fence trash can. So donations for the park would be, you know, obviously, more than welcome to be able to round it out. The Green Communities Grant, I met with CMRPC, National Grid and Guardian, and National Grid sent a list of accounts with credits that I guess were slated to pay for part of this project. So I sent those to Guardian, and the agreement with Guardian is all set, so I'm just waiting to hear back from him, and then we'll start moving on with that. All of the public records requests, blessedly, we had one, two, three, four, five, they were all related to the bids, which is typical, equipment's out there, people want them. So those were easy enough to send back. And then I had a bunch of meetings. I do wanna, I put, I did a typo with David Flick. It's, I typed David Flitch, so I just do want to point that out. Dr. Marshall and I held three treasure collector interviews with two of the candidates, being very possible. The one that won out, she actually has a bachelor's degree in finance, and she has the supervisory experience. She had five years in Palmer and is most recently in Hudson, and is just looking for a, a different town to work for. So we're excited that she has accepted our offer of the seventy-six thousand three hundred and ninety-seven, I believe it was, three hundred and seventy-nine prorated to her data of hire, obviously. So we're anticipating that she's gonna start November seventeenth. So that's very exciting. I had a meeting with Pitney Bowes, and we're gonna have a mandatory change to the postage machine because it needs to be updated. That lease for the new one would be three hundred dollars a month more than what we're paying now, so I said we are not budgeted for that. They wanted to start doing it immediately. So I don't think she can wait to change it to the end of the fiscal year, but she's gonna see how far out she can go with changing it, and then we'll go from there. But like I said, it is a mandatory change, something about the metering that needs to change. Just a bunch of, I did get to go to the dispatch center. I have a board meeting on Friday for the dispatch center, so they met with me prior to that, just so I could get the overview of it and see the center, so that was kind of nice to do that. And I had a very long meeting with the town clerk today, that was much needed, just talking about processes and, and the town clerk's office needs. And I know I have spoken to a couple of you, maybe all three of you, about not having like an actual day slated for the annual town meeting in the, in the, in the bylaws. And Ellen is actually amenable to changing the bylaw and actually establishing an annual day that it will be, so it's not left open, so we don't end up at the end of June. So I asked her to get back to me on what would be feasible for her, because I think her, I don't remember when her election is, but it would be before that, so we just want to make sure that it's not too congested at that time for her. So she's gonna get back to me on that, so it's kind of exciting. And then just a whole list of, a bunch of other things. Oh, I did respond to seven public records requests. The supervisor of records for the Commonwealth, for that twelve thousand email public record request, they actually approved our appeal, so they would charge seventy-five dollars, we would be able to charge seventy-five dollars per hour instead of twenty-five. And we would have an additional thirty days to do the review, so the request would be just over sixteen thousand dollars. So town council had sent the, the response to the anonymous requister, and I haven't heard anything back from them yet. We are having a finance team meeting on Wednesday, which I'm excited about. It'll include the accountant, the assessor, the treasure collector, myself, and Dr. Marshall, just to find out where we are in closing FY twenty-five, how things are going in FY twenty-six, which I know is a rocky start as we're in between treasure collectors, so that we know what we're looking at for a special town meeting for this year. Oh, and Sandy posted the VSO position from the resignation of Betty Jo, which is in your packet, so we can discuss that when we get there. But there's a highlights.
Thank you. Any questions or...
No, it's a lot there, thank you. It's a good report.
You forgot to say that we spent about an hour with the schools, talking about all the money they have.
Oh, I know, I just...
The money they have or don't have?
We'll save that for when we have more info.
I parked up on that, they have.
Yeah, I did attend the meeting in Worcester with the Department of Education on those matters that were discussed, and we'll bring this, you know, group up to, you know, speed when Melanie and I are ready to do so. Okay, moving along.
Chief's here.
I'm sorry?
The chief is here.
Off the, off the call? Do you want to take a shot at, having enough time to do this?
Off four calls?
Okay, off the, okay, off the last four calls. Do you want to give us an update?
I just wanted to come in and just promoted Stan and Dr. Speed to deputy chief. Listen, Stan, I just wanted to introduce him to the board.
Stan, you want to sit down so I can just see you? Thank you so much for stepping forward and, you know, I appreciate your willingness to take the, on the additional responsibilities. We look forward to working with you.
Sam, looking forward to working with you all, and Karen Department Forward, been on for, she's over twenty years at this point. Kind of the reason why I ended up in Barry was because of the fire department.
Really?
It's what kind of drew me to town, so nice to be able to continue that forward. And I have nine years of chief experience from another agency, so I'm hoping that that will be a...
What agency was that?
West Airborne.
Oh, great, oh, good.
We've had a few changes over the years where they've changed the structure, but was chief up there for nine years, so learned a lot.
I bet.
So hopefully, you can bring some of those lessons here and help the chief out.
Help, yeah, that's what's impossible.
It's very, it's very nice of you to take the time to come in and meet us. We think, thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have training, so we're just gonna...
Okay.
Congrats and be safe.
Thanks so much. Okay, I think we found out why Hardwick is here tonight. If you'd like to come and join us, ambulance service to the...
I'm just here to collect information.
To collect information? Well, if you have questions, I, please, I encourage you to ask them, and, you know, I, I know that when, last year, when you guys sort of pulled out of the, you know, thing with the building inspector thing, you know, we were so unhappy, because you had pulled out the day before the end of the fiscal year, even though you're supposed to give us ninety days' notice. We, we understood why, it was a bunch of crazy stuff, we, we worked through it. And I have the feeling, and I could be wrong, that when you guys got the new rate from us, you must have been feeling the same way I felt about what happened with the building inspector. So I'm living in hope that we can walk through our, our issues of concern and so forth, and ultimately, together, come away with whatever decision we're gonna, gonna make over time. One thing, obviously, we know we're in the midst of a middle thing, and we're certainly not going to not respond, you know, when, when we can and so forth. But anyway, I'll leave that to Richard, if you'd like to kind of walk us through where you got the numbers, why you got the numbers.
I think now he's gonna lead off.
Actually, yeah, so I put this on the agenda, just because you all had voted before to send a letter for eighty-three thousand and something dollars for the service. Since then, we have decided to have a meeting. It'll be Justine and myself.
And me.
Dr. Marshall, and I'm sorry, I don't know who you are.
William Tinker?
William Tinker. Are you the chair?
Vice chair.
Vice chair, okay.
If Eric can't attend, I'll, I can attend that meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
I'll mention it to Eric.
Oh, so Eric is not going to, you and Eric are gonna attend?
No, Eric, Eric will attend. He's the chair.
Oh, okay.
I'm not, I just don't know if he's aware of this.
Okay, okay.
That's all.
Okay. So we, we can walk, we can walk through the situation and see what kind of resolution?
Yeah, so there'll need to be a little bit more discussion, because the, I had asked Justine for a copy of the contract, I think it was at thirty-five thousand, and she sent me a partially signed contract, but not a fully executed contract. So I don't think Barry had ever signed it.
Well, the reason being is we were in the midst of probably the, the third, you know, interim town, town administrator at the time? And I know that after the fact, he had just used a previous year's contract and thought that that was correct. He signed it without really a, any kind of meeting with us, and then we found out sort of after the fact, to indicate that we were a little bit running crazy with no town administrator, no interim town administrator, and the chief of police helping us out with some interim county duties, I mean, getting through a late town meeting and so forth. Obviously, this was not something that we paid, I'll take the blame, that the, the chair took appropriate time and intent, spent time and attention on. So there, there is no executed contract. However, we are good neighbors, as you have been good neighbors, and we continue to have that discussion. But there is a reason for our change in the, the financing, and it has nothing to do with Hardwick and everything to do with what's happening in the environment, to try to put, you know, vehicles on the road, and, and we put a contract together where we increased the hourly rate for our paramedics, for obvious reasons, we can't get them without doing that.
Such a shortage.
And then we had a fourteen or fifteen percent increase in health insurance, and, 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 and. And so we can walk through numbers with you, and it was, please don't take any of this personally, that, that we're in some way saying, let's get that Hardwick out. We're not. We're just praying that we can get through the year with the help and attention of our neighbors, as well as, you know, us doing the best job we can. So tell, tell Eric, you know, that we'll, we'll be in touch, well, we're going, being in touch through Justine.
November eighteenth.
November eighteenth.
November eighteenth, we're supposed to be having, I don't have my calendar, so I don't know the time, but that's where we're supposed to be meeting. So that's, that's all that this was on there, to alert everybody, because there had been a previous vote that we're going to be discussing it.
Yeah, and please, and thank you so much for taking the time to, to come over.
Yeah, we appreciate that very much.
Okay. Vadar accounting software, you can bring us up to date on that, Melanie?
Yep, so I have mentioned it quite a few times about changing the accounting software over to Vadar, so that it speaks to our assessing software and our tax collector, tax collecting software. And I had a good conversation with Vadar over there. Apparently, there had been a signed contract a few years ago.
Yes.
That nobody responded to once the work began, and while they could have decided to take action on that, they decided not to in the end. And I have to say, they're very excited for us to go to the accounting module, just because we have had their tax collecting software for so many years. I don't know how many years at this point, because I wasn't here, but for a, a long time, we've had their tax collecting software. So the price is in your packet, it's the ten thousand three hundred and... It'll be ten thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents for six years, right across the board for six years. Softright, right now, which is actually no longer Softright, it's Spring, Springbrook, which is a national company that, that had bought Softright, for FY twenty-six, it was eight thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. So, and it had gone up about a thousand and thirty dollars from the year before, so, I mean, you're, you're looking at, you would be above that anyway, over six years. So the price of it is comparable. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention and get your support for, for moving our accounting software to Vadar. They will start, they'll need, as it says, indicates in their email, they'll need about five or six months to get it started. So what their plan is, is to start building the chart of accounts. They have somebody that they, that they contract with, who, she's like an advisor, an accounting advisor, and she does this for multiple, multiple towns, to build a brand-new chart of accounts, to really clean up. It's our opportu, our opportunity to clean up all of our vendors in there, because you always have outdated vendors. It's our opportu, our opportunity to clean up all of our vendors in there because you always have outdated vendors. So, it's a real opportunity to make it exactly what we want to make it. So, over the five to six months, they'll build everything, they'll train everybody that needs to be trained on the software. And then we'll go live on July one. We will, I'll have to get ahold of Springbrook because we will still need access to the Softright program. So, I don't know if they're just going to allow us to just keep it because it's in, in place or whatever they said. It's, it's on our server, if that's what the lingo is, but it's in place. So, we, I don't know if they're just going to allow us to keep accessing it to view but not to utilize. We, we will have to have it for some point past the close of FY twenty-six just so that we can close it and do all of our reporting. And then in the meantime, I'll find out if we can download everything into like Excel or text document or whatever it is that they do to do that so that we have it as backup. So, yeah, I would just like your support in going to Vadar and hopefully make a move.
I need to take a motion to accept as the town administrator has requested, at least for the purposes of discussion. Could I have a motion to do that?
Yep, I make a motion that we consider moving to the Vadar systems.
Second.
My motion made in seconded, force discussion. I would say I was part of the group that we worked with Vadar probably about three or four years ago, had moved down the road quite a bit, and then individuals within the, you know, accounting office just basically said, we're not doing it, and there was a lot of back and forth. And so, we never were able to move forward with it. And simultaneously with that rebuke of the software, one of our, one of our, one of our many town administrators had taken another job with the Department of Revenue. So, anyway, I, so we were really without the capacity, without having a town administrator, to move forward at that time. We have a, a motion to approve the request of our town administrator to move to Vadar with, with haste so that our next budgeting season, starting July one, we could be up and running with the Vadar systems.
At the request of our town administrator and recommendation, I move that we vote to consider Vadar to be our counting software system going forward.
Further discussion?
No, I, I just had a quick question, that's, that's locked in, Melanie, but it's...
Yep, for six years.
Six years.
That's the price for six years. Yep.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made in seconded, further questions for Melanie on this matter? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's a vote, Vadar it is.
Thank you.
Is that per year or is that for total of six years?
Per year.
Per year?
Yep.
Ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven.
Okay, we have a discussion brief, as it will probably be on our holiday scheduling. And I, I think if I can remember it off the top of my head, and I, you may have to help me, Melanie, I believe that there's a half-day, a workday.
Yes.
For all of our employees on the day before Thanksgiving, on the day before Christmas, and on the New Year's Eve day.
Yes.
Is that correct? All employees would be required one half of their schedule. If they're a five-hour-a-day person, they get two and a half hours off, if they're an eight-hour-a-day, et cetera. This is traditional, this is not a new thing because Melanie is here. This is something that has happened to our numerous, numerous previous years. And we just need to have a, have a motion to approve that change in work schedule for those three days.
You've, you've actually already approved this. This is on here because we have one department, the Senior Center, who says that they can't close for a half-day. So, we need to try to figure out what to do. I was hoping she was actually going to come because she said there's no meal service for that day. So, I'm not sure if there's no meal service or any other activities why she couldn't close the Senior Center for a half-day on those three days.
I would be surprised to have any discussion that would be to the contrary just because when there is a snow day in the district, generally speaking, the Senior Center is closed for obvious reasons. If we can't get that down to the beer wood, you know, and, and safe, we do not open the Senior Center. That happens on some regularity. I don't think that's a shock or a change in what we've done in the past.
Okay.
So, I, I think with notice, I, you know, they usually have, you know, holiday events that they have, but they certainly don't, there's, they're not having them Christmas Eve.
So, is she looking for an alternative time off or what?
I, I believe so, yes. I emailed her to ask her for, for, for opinion of what she would need, but I haven't heard back from her. But she did let me know that there were no meals, so I don't...
It's puzzling then, why you're...
I don't know.
Well, if there are no meals then, I mean, really, that, that's the only thing that we really have an obligation to provide nowadays. And if there's, if the feds aren't putting the meals together, then, I mean, I, I just, I just don't, I mean, I guess it's never been closed. I, I can't believe that.
I, I actually don't know, it's the first time I've seen it yet too.
Well, I would say, without her giving us more specific data and information as to why this is necessary, we should just close it, just as we originally voted.
Just close the half-day, okay.
Are there people, are there people who are counting on that organization all the time?
No, well, the only thing they could be counting on would be a meal, and the meals are not being produced by the federal government and served that day. So, our concern is, I think the, whether they do meals on wheels and stuff, I don't know, but they have those days, our no meals are provided at the Senior Center. And it's not us that provides those meals, it's the, you know, Council on Aging Group out of Worcester, so.
So, there, there are groups of people that come to the Senior Center on a regular basis?
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that they're, I mean, they're...
Meals?
I, I wouldn't say is every day the same people are always there, no. I would say it ebbs and flows, depending on the menu, depending on the weather. And most, the bad weather days, we have very, very, very poor, if, any, any attendance at all. Because a lot of those individuals don't drive, and the van is off the road if the day, if it's too, you know, dangerous. So, and beside the fact, getting it shoveled out, properly salted, standard, whatever, to make sure people are safe. Yes, it's, it takes us a little time.
Okay, so I'll let her know that unless...
Yeah, we, we can't...
Okay, without more information, it's still a half-day like everybody else, okay. Okay.
Okay. Moving down to E, Town-Owned Property Resident Interested in Purchasing Parcel G eight four eight seven off North Brookfield Row.
So, I had a Sean Thorpe reach out with interest to this property. And I, not being from this town and only having been here for a few, couple of months, I don't have knowledge of the parcels, so I give no information to people in regards to parcels that I don't know anything about.
We do own the parcel.
Yes.
I know that we have looked at it to see if it was still gravel rich, and it's not.
No, it's not.
It is an area where there's a lot of, you know, kind of four-wheeling, irritates the neighbors. But, that, not being said, we know that there's interest in the property by the individuals that are involved in the cross-state trail group, that they have some interest in this parcel. I don't know if this gentleman has, is, is, was one of that group, I don't know, I don't know anything about that. I don't know what to do at this point if we, if we post that the, that the parcel is available and we look for the highest bidder or what we do, I don't know.
So, so this, because this was foreclosed on prior to the tax title law changes, this goes back to, by DLS's opinion, this goes back, reverts back to where you can do an auction for the property.
Okay.
So, it would have to be advertised, it would have to be for auction for everybody, that type of thing. But I did, when I was looking at it, obviously, I pulled up the map for you guys, it has the Commonwealth of Mass land all around it. It's got the East Quabbin Land Trust, there's somebody on the other side of the river that owns a couple of parcels. So, I mean, it seems, and I, I could tell you, Mr. Thorpe, because I asked him what his interest in it was. He said he owns land close to it, he lives at G fifty-six C. Oh, which is kind of down towards the bottom, towards the left. And he and his daughters have always loved walking back to that land and could be interested in building a house or using it for just recreational use. It's a beautiful spot and he'd like to see it preserved.
Well, there's no road signs, yeah.
Well, that's his concern, his biggest concern is access to the land as well as if it's like blocked.
There's no way to get to it at all.
Yeah.
Other than the rail trail.
Yeah, other than rail.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I talked to the director of the East Quabbin Land Trust. The state has told them that the state is interested in buying this property. And if the process to sell to the state is too long, the Land Trust is interested in expediting it by pre-acquiring it. And the other question was, how much is offered for this?
We have no, and there was no offer made.
No, there would be no offer, because it would be, it would end up being an auction, although I think of, I would have to check with the tax title attorney about a land trust or the Commonwealth wanting to purchase it.
Well, this, like you mentioned, it has state land on three sides of it, and a rail trail on the fourth side of it. So, I think the best use of this land is perfect for the state to acquire it. It's not a great place to put a house because the trail does go by it and there's no access to it.
No legal road signs, I don't see how they could fill the house anyway.
So, this process to sell it by auctions is, it takes a while, right?
Well, it all, it all, it all depends if there is some interest by the Commonwealth. The Commonwealth may have some sort of a fit process that they can make an offer that's different than if you were just Maury Marshall. Because they're doing it for a, what has been, you know, a huge project for the Commonwealth, which is that rail trail. And I mean, they really need this land to get through Berry.
They'd be contagious owners.
I mean, we'll find out from the attorney, I don't, I don't know.
The Land Trust owns the right way for the rail trail anyway.
Right.
So, that's not really a problem, it's just if someone builds a house down there, they have to cross the rail trail continuously to use it. But it is, I was down there today, there's deer down there, there's a lot of deer tracks, I saw doe. Put a house down there would really degrade the property around it, it's on the state.
You can't put a house down there.
You can't put a house down there.
Because that's not an option, yeah. This, this was more of just a fact-finding agenda item to let people know that there's interest in the property. Yeah.
So, he's, he said that he does, he doesn't want to see it developed or something?
He'd like to...
Preserve it?
See it preserved this way near the river and everything.
Well, I think the Land Trust agrees with that anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, it's good information.
Well, we'll obviously be working with an attorney to find out what we have to do in order to make it available to anybody.
Do you know somebody at the Land Trust?
Well, I volunteer with them, but I spoke to the director, please, Cynthia Hinchcliffe. And she couldn't make it place, so she just asked me to come down and ask...
Could you ask her to get in touch with me?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be great.
I have a...
Well, last year, I engaged with this whole thing, and Jacob had all the information from the Fisheries and Wildlife. I believe the Fisheries, Fisheries and Wildlife buy it first and then somehow...
Yeah, it gets traded back with...
The Land Trust actually would buy it first because they can move quicker.
Well, whoever, whoever does, but he had all the numbers, he had all the information he was supposed to move forward on it. I don't know what happened with that, but they were in touch with him and myself. So, I mean, the ball was rolling at some point.
The state is very slow.
True.
I just didn't know if there was a process that you're gonna vote tonight to sell it.
Yeah, no.
No.
I just heard about this today.
No.
So, good, okay.
No, we're good, thank you. Okay, is that, you have everything you need for that?
Yep.
Okay, so, we're moving on to the Veteran's Service Officer resignation. We need a motion to accept the resignation of Betty Jo O'Brien as a Veteran's Service Officer.
I would move to approve the Veteran's Service Officer resignation, Betty O'Brien.
Second.
Which is, affected, I believe, eleven twenty, eleven ten?
Ten.
Eleven ten.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, with our thanks.
Yes, we do, Sandy had posted the position and we had somebody already interested in it. I don't know how you want to move forward with interviewing, anybody with interest in the VSO position?
I would, I would recommend, you know, for what it's worth, it, Tony Musnicki, who's, who is the, what do they call it? We call it Veterans, yeah, the VSO person for about twenty years in the town. He just really, really retired. He would be a wonderful person to interview with you, knowing, knowing exactly what to ask and so forth, and then obviously bring a candidate to us and we would be happy to move forward with it.
Sandy, I'm assuming you have his contact?
Tony?
Yes, okay.
I spoke with Betty Jo the other day and she said that there's, there's a lot of new requirements and things. It's a, it's a change, a big change from what it used to be.
Lot more work.
So, I'm, you know, I'm sure there's a limited audience, people don't like to work for nothing, you know?
I think that's a great idea with Tony, if he'd be willing to say with Melanie.
Well, and the people that I, that are, you know, getting the services right now are very familiar with him. And in the hiatus period, he, he would be helpful in sort of making sure that they still get some of the information, you know, the veterans that we have. I think we have four that are, you know, really active in this process.
Well, also, there's a change of requirement of hours worked, it's like nineteen hours now.
No, that means they're changing how much...
In the office, that's what Betty Jo would say to me.
Yeah, so I think we can look into that and see.
That's the mandatory from the state?
I guess, because...
That's seldom that they give that level of mandatory, but...
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if I can contact the VSO office from the state too, just to get more information.
And then the recommendation come back here for a phone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We only have one applicant at this point, so...
I make a motion that we authorize our town administrator, Melanie, to conduct the interviews for the Veterans Agent and to invite Mr. Tony Musnicki to participate if he's available.
I'll second him.
My motion made in seconded to authorize the town administrator to acquire the services of Tony Musnicki, previous officer, if interested to work, to hire someone for the Veterans Service Officer position. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, then we need treasurer-collector appointment. I'd like to just say that I did participate in those interviews with Melanie. We did have one really outstanding candidate, one pretty good vote, and another individual. When we began to talk about money, I said to her pointedly, would you take a job for X? And she said, no, and she says, thanks for not wasting my time. We said, thanks for not wasting our time, so she left. She had a lot of credentials, but, you know, was looking, obviously, for a little bit more money. Anyway, we had, I, I thought, as you pointed out, a really strong candidate and, and a very, you know, decent candidate. And I would ask for your recommendation as name and so forth so we can get that position filled.
Yes, so I operated to Shelby LaMoth and she accepted it at the seventy-six, three seventy-nine, prorated to a date of hire, she said she could start November seventeenth.
Do I have a motion?
Wait a minute, could you, for everyone here in the public, clarify how the town administrator by law is, you know...
Yes, actually, because I have it in my notebook, otherwise I say I can't.
I want to eliminate problems, yeah.
So, in the town administrator by law, and I have talked, and I have talked to all three of you because, you know, people interpret the written word differently. So, in section, in, in, oh, so this is chapter seventy, section seventy dash two, powers and duties, section C, says, "The town administrator shall recommend the appointment and may recommend the removal subject to civil, civil service law and any collective bargaining agreements as may be applicable of all department heads, all officers, subordinates, and employees for whom no other method of selection is provided by bylaws unless otherwise provided by state law. Appointments made by the town administrator shall become effective at their discretion unless the select board shall, within such period, by majority vote of the board, vote to reject such appointment or has sooner voted to affirm it."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I forgot her name.
Shelby LaMoth.
I move that we hire Shelby LaMoth to be the town treasurer-collector.
I'll second him.
My motion made in seconded to hire Shelby LaMoth as secret, as the new town treasurer, and that she would have an effective start date of November seventeen, November seventeenth, at the prorated salary that we will currently have in the budget for that position. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Melanie, thank you, you took a good deal of time through that interview process, and I think we got a very strong, capable candidate and excited to get her on board.
Yes, very much so, thank you.
Now, that, that person is taking Jake's job?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, no, I remember.
Okay, moving on to the request to use town property for the town hall for the Lepore family Christmas party. I'm a little concerned, okay? I know this sounds like a, 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 you know, want to ruin Christmas, however. Tuesday, December second, from two-thirty till eleven P.M.
Because what she's gonna do, she's gonna go in and decorate and set up. Then they need time to finish, clean up, and put everything back.
Okay, so...
I thought of that too.
What time does the fest, my concern is, we really don't want to say that this, you know, that we rent out our town hall for a family party that is, you know, from, let's face it, two-thirty to eleven P.M.
Usually, it's like four, four to nine or something.
Yeah, I, I only look at it and I say, okay, we have, we don't heat the town hall much at all.
No.
Okay, so, we're gonna crank up that. If we have a snow day or a rough day, weather-wise, we have to hustle over there and do a lot of manual shoveling to get it ready. If someone is injured during the party, you know, after, from two-thirty till eleven, I get a little nervous. I get a little nervous of what our liability might be, I don't, I don't want to sound like a Grinch, okay?
No.
I really don't. But that's an unusual request for that, usually, it's, you know...
Are they residents?
They, she attends the congregation there now.
She what?
She's part of the congregation, Grace Formation.
So, she's, so she's part of, she's a part of a church group, but she's not a town resident?
Not a resident.
My only concern is, I, I don't, I don't know about our insurance, if we begin to hire out our facility for parties and someone is injured, I think we probably are liable.
Okay.
And I would just say, check it out with Maya, I, I don't, I don't know, maybe I'm being too much of a...
Well, I, I'll call her tomorrow, because when I, when I got the time, I'm like, mm, because I, we kept playing phone tag, I kept calling her, coming back, messages, so finally I just wanted to get it on there for the board to even look at it.
Well, this is an unusual request.
It is.
And I, and she, she makes it very clear, it's for a Lepore family Christmas party, and she doesn't even live in town, she just attends church there on Sunday. So, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm a little concerned.
Yeah.
I, I mean, we, we could require her to get a one-day insurance policy for liability, which we, we requested that the people pulling weights up at the field had to get.
It's, that building is a significant part of our town, and we've already had to replace it once, and let's not hope we ever have to do that again. But eleven o'clock at night, who's gonna make sure it's secure, who's gonna make sure things are shut off, who's gonna make sure the heat's turned down?
That would be me.
Well, that's not fair to you, Sandy, that's not fair to you, Sandy, I mean, seriously.
I kept throwing dates out and out, it didn't work, it didn't work, I said, "Listen, just fill it out, we'll bring it to the board when you guys talk about it."
I'd be declined to not deny it, I mean, if there are residents and taxpayers that vary, then maybe something, but...
Are there serving alcohol?
No, no.
Maybe they should.
Good question, though.
No.
Well, that's good.
No, they can't.
I don't, I don't know, I...
I made, I told you what I thought.
I would, I would request that you get more information, so that we might make a better decision, and maybe even check our liability stuff and the insurance policies, because...
I don't think we should be in the business of running out for parties.
Yeah, because, oh, she's probably figuring she's doing it for, we're gonna do it for free, right?
No, no, she's paying.
Paying what?
Well, whatever the rental fee was, which...
Fifty dollars?
Yeah, well...
You can't even turn the heat on for that.
And I told her I'd hold the check until you, until the board was okay with it.
I hate to sound like the Grinch, I really do, but I...
That's fine, I wouldn't have a problem trying to get ahold of her, the problem is getting ahold of her.
But, I mean, I, I look at it and I say, "I'm sure you can't go up to the Legion Hall for free."
Oh, no.
No.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I'm gonna make a motion to deny it, I just don't think it's good for...
I'll second him.
Is there further discussion, I hate to be the Grinch and then I would say, "Well, I'll get more information."
It's a costly venture to turn the heat on that building, or lighten that building, it's a significant building in our community, and then to have it open till eleven o'clock at night, I, I just, I have concerns.
We have a motion made and seconded to deny the request, and I guess I'll call the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, because I was the one who brought it up. Well, I feel badly in a way, but I hope she, the family understands, it just is a little bit over the top. Okay, old business, discuss proposed location for an electronic sign, can I leave?
I put it on to Sam, he has to have it on there.
We told him, yeah.
Well, as I've, as I've, as I've searched around the town and driven around, I have to agree with, I don't know who brought it up, that the best place to put it would be to get special permission from the state down at Truffalo's, what do they call it, Truffalo's?
Square.
Square, or whatever, which is immediately almost in front of where the wholesome foods market is and the, near the donut shop, you know, or something. Now, admittedly, that is, it's a, it's a difficult intersection as it is, but since we can't come out of there from Valley Road with much traffic now, because the bridge is closed, it's been better. However, you have to admit that it is a busy intersection, and adding a sign, so that I'm going by, looking at the sign, I don't know, so I, I would like to hear the chief of police's analysis of what he thinks that location might mean from a safety perspective, am I being over the top on that?
Well, even, I mean, you don't even know if the state would be in on this.
Well, I'm, I'm of a mind that the state would be amenable, since they've been amenable to putting the, the stone there and the flag and the stuff, calling it Truffalo Square, so they had...
Yeah, it's a whole different story, electronic sign.
Well, you're starting to sound like the Historical Commission now.
Will, will it be a permit?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's it gonna say?
Well, town advance.
Electronic, programmable.
Like all, like all the towns have.
Town meeting, whatever.
Do we have funding for this sign?
Uh, no.
Do we have funding for this sign?
Of course not.
No.
Well, first, we need funding, and then we can figure out what, what we're gonna buy, and then we're...
I can see that we're no fun at all now.
So...
I'm feeling better about being the Grinch, you're, you're, you're looking for money. I'm, I'm of, I'm of a mind that there could be, there could be donations for this sign, because this sign has been something that's been talked about by various groups, saying we should have it, and we have been, we've had money, we've had upper money then, and we ended up not putting it into this, because we couldn't get any agreement from the Historical Commission as to anywhere in the common, we just couldn't, because of historical, they have to do that, so.
Other towns have these?
Yes, Oakham, Rutland...
Where have you been, lady?
I don't know.
I'm gonna take you for a ride.
We have one, we have one south there.
Now, you don't have one in Gilbertville or Hardwick either, and, and, you know...
It would come in handy.
Yeah.
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 It just, it just announces what the events come, like town meeting coming up, or the elections, pertinent information the community would see.
Because I go, when I go through Rutland, Rutland or Holden, I, I do look.
Yeah, Oakham has one, right in the center of town, across from the library.
But nobody goes there, though.
As far as the distraction, is the stores and the pizza and the...
Well, that's what I mean, but I'm adding another distraction, that's what I'm saying.
And that, that's, those stores are distractions in itself.
Well, no, I know that, but the chief of police would say, "You are adding yet another distraction." He may say, "We never have any, any accidents down there, no big deal, don't worry about it."
It's a line of sight, too, like, the sign can't be, like, if you're pulling out a Dunkin' Donuts, you look right and the sign's blocking your view, that's what the chief's gonna weigh in on, it's line of sight.
Yeah, but we would never do that, anything that stupid, would we? I mean...
Let's hope not.
I hope not, yeah.
I guess it all depends how important the town thinks that they want to be informed. If they don't want to be informed, we don't need a sign there, but it seems as though that...
Well, they may say, "We need to be informed, we'd love it", but it's dangerous there, pick another spot, but we've talked about, we have a small one at Norney Park, we have one in front of the senior center, we have one at the high school, but that's really the, it's up on their property, it's not our big deal, so, we, there are those around.
And the one at the high school, it's because of a courtesy.
Yeah, that they, they have our stuff on it once in a while.
Yeah, it's because of courtesy, but it's not a, it's not a regular, I've looked around.
This, this would replace your sandwich board, Sam.
Oh, yeah, but I wouldn't want to give that up.
You don't have to, special permit.
I wouldn't want to give that up, I'm having, I have too much fun.
And you, you're looking to say, "Yes, he does."
He walks around the corner with a sandwich board.
Well, okay, so we have, we have no vote on this at this point, we just are saying we'll continue to discuss it?
Well, I think, I think whoever we need to approach at the state level, send a letter or something to see if they even entertain...
We say to the chief...
Well, we need funding, this is a hypothetical sign.
We do, but if the state says no, then we know we're not going out the funding, because we have a no, like, we can't use their property, so we gotta find town property.
Yeah, but the, the problem is, when you contact the state for anything, they say, "What about this, what about this, what about this?", and then you're starting this whole chain reaction for a hypothetical sign that we don't even have the funding for.
Yeah, but I, but I, but there, but there are ways, okay, to ask the question of our representatives, that they can find out information for us, so that we would say, okay, that...
If you want me to take the time to do it, I'll take the time to do it, but...
Sure, we can just, why don't we just ask, say, "Hey, is there any chance that we could possibly do that?"
I'll do that.
At one, so Melanie just mentioned...
I'll do it.
At one time, at one time, the center of the town, as we go up the hill, there was a deer way station.
Here we go.
Yes, I've heard.
At one time, and that was, that happened to be the area...
For decades.
Which, for years, that's where a sign was, and people looked, but now, we have a Historical Society who claims that it's no longer possible, and I guess it's a question whether we need to, I mean, I personally think, as a citizen of forty-five years or so, that we need, we need to have a central place where citizens of this town can see what's going on.
Why, why can't we put it around here somewhere?
Because we, because not, many people come through this way.
I'm not disputing that, I think that's good.
You could have, you could put it around your lawn.
Well, you'd see it every day, Sam, but I wouldn't.
You wanna put, we can, we can put it...
He lives two houses up.
We can put it across from E.P. Wine on my lawn, I can, we can do that, if he's like.
Well, I guess we'll, we'll make some questions, I, I, you know, okay, uh...
Door to back up to...
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll add back up there to selectmen's reports, we have a water loss update, and another big water break last, either Thursday night or whatever.